Live, it's not live.
Yep.
What is going on?
It is right now. We just started. Morning, everybody. It's a little after eight fifteen. He says you're not. We will, uh, get this meeting called to order here, um. Do we have approval of the agenda in the minutes and do we have a liquor license?
We do have a liquor license, actually.
She even.
I emailed them to you.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all we got?
Yeah.
Did you add the correction of how I put in the daycare?
No, because you didn't send it to me.
Holly did.
I didn't, I didn't get, you'll have to send it to me again because I don't, I don't, I didn't get anything.
Who's your liquor license for, Miss Auditor?
Um, the liquor license would be for the fountain's ballroom. I guess for whenever they, um.
When they open?
Yeah. It's a renewal for them. Everything's here.
Okay. Is that the only one?
Yep.
Easy enough.
Hey, what do we want to do with the minutes?
Well, we can put them at, as corrected when she gives me the stuff, then I'll correct it and.
What do you need to add to the minutes?
When West Central had another five million dollars from the governor for the daycare. I remember that, and then you wanted me to give that over to Holly. I went ahead and erased it. Holly had it, so she was gonna give it to you when I explained that to the last meeting.
So she could, okay, so that was so that they can share it with their daycare people.
Right. It was pretty important. I mean, it was quite of a great deal.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda and minutes. The minutes will be.
Corrected, corrected.
Corrected. To add the West Central.
Right, add the West Central grant.
Five thousand, did you say?
And to approve the liquor license for the fountain's ballroom.
And I seconded it?
Got a motion by Crouch and a second by Vinton. Roll call vote.
No, you don't. The new girl is, the new girl is working on it and I'm trying to teach her.
That's what the agenda says, so.
We missed that one.
We could do a roll call. Let's do a roll call just to humor it.
Okay, Mayberry.
Yes.
Crouch.
Yes.
But, yes.
Yes, motion carried three to nothing.
All A's, A's.
Oh, I looked it over. I missed that one. I'm, I'm training the new kid.
Any visitor recognitions? I will refresh this and see if. Anybody's joined us? April fourteenth, April seventh. There we are. Bear with us for those of you listening. We are. Pulling this up now on our computer. The only updates I have to add right now is that, uh, Economic Development has started their advertising for their new developer. Uh, it's posted on the IEDA website, LinkedIn, and a few other sites. They will be listing it in the OT and the Malvern Leader, so. The word's out. We'll be waiting for some applications.
Put on the county website or?
Sure, we can put it on the county website. Yeah, I'll, uh, forward you the info. Kate has that. I may have heard of it. It'll be, you'll get an email from Kate or me.
Oh, for my updates, uh, on Friday, I had a teleconference with Governor Reynolds and, uh, three other people, uh, Joel Anderson is with Economic Development, Sarah Lee, Senator for Public Health, and Kelly Garcia with Department of Human Services. I realize some of this is kind of some old news, but, uh, they are developing response teams for public health. Of course, no school. It's all been canceled. And then we were supposed to have money coming to the state, but the big problem is, uh, the people in DC can't seem to make up their mind that the counties should get their fair share first. So if you have any contact with legislators or representatives or anything, uh, you might get on the phone and pull their ear and tell them, hey, folks, one point three million dollars for Mills County is nothing to laugh at. If it's not put out properly, that could come in. Payments of fifty thousand or maybe twenty-five or something over a period of time. So I think it's very important that we try and keep on top of where our money should come from.
Is that from the CARES Act money?
Yeah. And it's supposed to be a nonpartisan thing, whether you're Democrat, Republican, it shouldn't make any difference. This is for the people. And, uh, they're also looking at working on backfilling like our, uh, uh, gas revenue that we should be getting and part of our, uh, lost money, backfilling some of it. Uh, you know, if they don't, uh, the, the, a lot of counties, uh, things just won't happen. I mean, there'll be a lot of projects that will come to a halt, so that's not a good situation.
I know. I talked to the Pacific Junction City Clerk yesterday, and they're trying to figure out what, where that's all gonna come from and how those two items are figured, if it's figured on population or is figured on what, and I explained to her that the lost is actually on the business, but doesn't have anything to do with the population and then the, the rent funds would come, you know, if that's figured. But I'm not so sure that she doesn't get her dollars, um, because of the size of the community from the engineer. I think he gets monies from the state for their, uh, roads.
And some of this goes back to the five hundred thousand population thing, and there's only one county in this area that is close to that, just barely over, is Douglas County, Nebraska.
No, Douglas didn't get it.
Didn't, well, no, but they, they were, they're over five hundred thousand people.
So they're four hundred and eighty some thousand.
Oh, okay, but anyway.
Yeah.
The mayor is. Pre-obsessed because they're not gonna get anything.
I think that, yeah, the city, okay, that's where they are. It's the city population, but the county qual- almost qualifies.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things they did discuss was, uh, the treasures with the annual tax sale. Uh, it's being reviewed and, uh, really, folks, they're asking that you try and make an attempt to pay your taxes in some way if possible. Tax sale is being looked at to see if it's going to be done. Uh, there was a big thank you to the county auditors and the treasures from Sarah Rissit, for what they've done and, uh, things they've had to handle. And I don't quite understand the electronic cards. I guess they're a card that they can be sent out to people and, uh, used for buying things, and we are one of four states that have them available for people.
Through the whole state?
Huh?
Through the whole state?
Yep. And, uh.
Isn't that through DHS? Is it through DHS for like the?
Yep.
Is that it?
And I had a teleconference last night with Board of Health, but, uh, we, I don't know, I think people were didn't mute their phones because they was afraid they was gonna miss something, and the thing is, it's the muting part is the background noise that feeds into it.
Yeah.
So you got the dogs barking and?
Oh, it, it, it just, it, it was a good meeting, had a lot of information and stuff, but every once in a while, you'd run into a couple of minutes and it'd just like if somebody talked, there was, it would bounce back and so. We're working on getting these things straightened out. It's something new to a lot of people and things, so we'll learn.
I so agree. These, these meetings that you've gotta go over the phone is really different. I had received a wonderful email from Justin Frank, the Assistant District Manager of the, uh, landfill, and they have, he sent to me, um, a control plan, uh, anywhere from uncovered loads. There will be a surcharge. Wind cages, littering, litter fencing, inspection of incoming and outgoing loads. They want to, um, have their landfill the right way. They wanna please people. They are enlarging. Uh, some great things are happening out there, so, um, I will send this over and put it on our county, uh, uh, webpage so everybody can read it, but it's a, a pretty positive thing. From Justin Franks.
I hope, I hope they do something because I've got two cornfields and a bean field. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with it. I mean, maybe I'll call them and say, hey, will you come and unplug my corn planter and stuff because plastic and metal just does not mix.
Well, when you have those forty, fifty mile an hour winds, it picks up a lot of stuff.
It, it comes out of the trucks that have dumped.
Right, and I think this is why they're really cracking down on the uncovered loads because they are getting tired of phone calls and now they're gonna hire somebody just to be cleaning up the ditches around the, the landfill, so, yeah, it's, it's really starting to become. Yeah, maybe I should apply for it. Pick it up trash.
Morning, Cory.
Good morning, guys. How are you guys?
That's it. I'm done.
County Engineer Cory Gaston is in. Any utility permits?
No utility permits. Uh, I have one on the desk, um, got finalized reviewing. Uh, that was one of the roles that, uh, former employee handled, and so a little bit behind the ball in that. Um, don't think we're holding him up, though. Uh, that's, uh, reroute of a fiber line out in the Proney Creek area, but I'll have, I'll bring it forward to you next week.
Good.
Okay.
Uh, I got a cou- couple of action items. General discussion. Get it right down my notes before I forget something that's on the top of my head.
That's pretty scary. That's how much younger he is.
Not saying nothing, not saying a word.
There's a lot of things going on. It's hard to keep track sometimes, but the first item I have is approval of pay voucher seven to Western Engineering, um, for our swap one oh five project. That's that, that was the two hundred twenty-first street overlay. We still haven't finalized that project. Um, Lehman's eyes, it looks complete. There's still a little bit of earthwork to do around, uh, a couple of the structures, the culverts that we, um, either lengthened or did some, some work around those. Uh, some earth, some repair work for the contractor to complete around the guardrail. Had some, um, we put in paved shoulders where we put the guardrail at, and we just, we got some sloughing going on right, right against the pavement, so I actually have a meeting with the contractor and HGM who's handled the contract administration this afternoon. I'm gonna go over the punch list items and so. Uh, this payment, though, is for one hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, twenty-three cents. And it's out of, uh, this, it is a swap funds, um, so it comes out of our FM account and then gets reimbursed through the swap funds.
Okay.
Perfect.
Most of the payments, um, we had some flagger payment and, um, some additional work with clearing and grubbing and, uh, the rest of the asphalt binder, so. Those payments are.
Good. Do we have a motion to approve pay voucher number seven, guys?
I make a motion to approve to pay voucher seven to the Western Engineering project.
Second.
Got a motion of second to pay voucher number seven to Western Engineering for the two hundred twenty-first street overlay. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, I was just gonna ask, are we withholding so much before they get done?
Yes, uh, that's, uh, the retainage is thirty thousand dollars on, uh, on these swap projects. I I think it should be more, but, uh, when, when the payments come out, when we have to send payments to DOT to make payments, say, are the ones that control the retainage, and just how the specs written, it's just thirty thousand where.
Yeah, you can kind of walk away from that.
Just a percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That doesn't hurt real bad, does it?
But this, this is this is a project that, uh, I'm not concerned about that as far, because we, we're, we're we haven't paid some of the items. I, I mean, we've paid what they've completed, but, um, there's still plenty to pay left on the contract.
Okay, alright.
Any other discussion?
At least we're getting started on it.
Yeah.
Good deal.
All getting restarted.
Yeah.
Finalized.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Just pull on my signature.
Will, will there be parking in front of the new building?
Yes, uh, I think there's been about a dozen or so. Parking stalls diagonal.
You're pulling from one way and?
Yep, the entrance will be on the.
South?
Southwest side, which, southwest, and exit at the northeast side. Um, there's, there'll also be parking, um, on the southwest side of the building, um, which I planned for the employees, office personnel to park there, and then a little bit on the northeast side of the building, um, plan for the foreman mechanic to park there.
Good. Good, good. Looks like it's still moving right along.
Yeah, uh, you saw that in pay vouchers, or accounts payables.
Right.
They have been moving, and it's really taking shape. Uh, couple resolutions. Uh, the first one, resolution twenty dash seventeen, establishment of speed zone limits on two hundred twenty-ninth Street and two hundred thirtieth Street.
You have copies of those, Cory?
I have two copies. One for me, one for the auditor. Um, I'm bringing it up on beacon to show you guys. If you wanna see for yourselves.
Like your honor, right?
Correct.
Right.
Um, we've, we've heard some complaints, and I've been in talks with the Sheriff's Department, um, and so they're good with what we're proposing here. So two hundred twenty-ninth Street, uh, is not a through street. It's all residential. And so from Barris Road, um, south to southwest, it'll be all signed for twenty-five miles per hour. That matches Iowa code for residential areas.
True.
Pretty simple. Um, then two hundred thirtieth, two hundred thirtieth Street, um, right there, the three-way stop.
That's not gonna happen.
It is all residential, south from Barris to, um, two hundred thirtieth Street. But it's a lo- larger lots. Um, I do know it's a thorough street, a thoroughfare, um, for a lot of people. Um, it just, we didn't think that, uh.
It's kind of like an auto.
We didn't think people would have followed the twenty-five mile an hour posting, so we're, we're gonna go thirty-five miles an hour, um, from Barris Road South, southwest to two hundred thirtieth Street, and then I can't remember how many feet, uh, about five hundred feet or so south of, um, the T, we'll bump it up to forty-five miles an hour, somewhere around here.
It'll be forty-five all the way through Bull Road now?
Forty-five from
Good.
City Limits up to that location.
Okay. Saw the signs were up.
Oh, we are. Motion to approve the new established speed limits on two hundred twenty-ninth Street and two hundred thirtieth Street.
Eric, so our, our sign formans?
He's on it. He's on it. Yep, that's good.
And I seconded it.
We've got a motion by Crouch and a second by Vinton to approve resolution twenty seventeen, establishment of speed limit zones on two hundred twenty-ninth and two hundred thirtieth. Is there any other discussion?
But they don't have the blinking lights on.
No.
Okay, they're just the plain jingles.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mayberry, yes. Crouch?
Yes.
Vinton?
Yes.
Take the auditor's job. Tell everybody on the YouTube world, she's slacking. Hope, hopefully she's in the other office listening to me.
Don't worry, she'll hear about it.
There you go.
Okay, and I have two copies. If you could, uh, sign both. Appreciate it. And we'll have to get the auditor's ticket entered, too.
Yeah, so let's attest it.
Okay, second resolution, um, yeah, resolution twenty dash eighteen, establishment of stop signs on the farm-to-market extension H thirty-four through Emerson. Um.
Where are they wanting to put this one?
So these are, have already been placed, um.
One's been there for years, hasn't it?
It has, um.
We're going down a little bit further.
It's brought to my attention, though, uh, that they are looking at putting in a new stop sign and, um, I had a look at Emerson's, uh, population and, and knowing that H thirty-four is also Mo- Morton Avenue through the town of Emerson, um, because they are under the population of five hundred, farm-to-market extensions are actually under the jurisdiction of the county, so we need, that would mean any, uh, changes to traffic control devices needs approval through this board.
You mentioned that a couple of weeks ago.
And, and so this resolution's just, uh, backdating, uh, the, the stop signs they've placed already, um. They've been placed, like you said, Richard, the, the one's been placed for multiple years. Um, the one near the park intersection is, is newer. I, I think it's warranted to have stop signs at a park intersection. That's where you're gonna see high traffic volume of pedestrian crossings, and, and so just making it safer. I do discourage stopping, uh, farm-to-market extensions through town, but when you have it at a park intersection, I think that's a case where it is warranted.
So are you talking, there will be then three between?
No.
We're not adding any.
No new ones.
No new ones.
It will just be the same right there by the?
Make it illegal.
Correct.
That's, that's a simple term. They've been there for years.
So, so where it is now, um, it's a three-way stop. Let's, uh, update a little bit. There's a three-way stop here coming in from the west. Um, and here, thank you. So you know.
That's an easy one to run. Zip, oh, I missed that one.
Um.
Dude.
Coming in from the west, that is a decline into the town, so, uh, they stop them. Helps slow down traffic coming into town. Also, right next to the park, it's a three-way stop, so heading west out of town, um, you do not stop, which is, it's good. I, I, I like that part about it. So it's a stop sign here, stop sign here, and here. The other, the newer stop sign intersection is at King Street, um, and it's a four-way stop, but once again, right here's the park, um, and I'd expect the highest amount of pedestrian traffic, um, in the area to be.
And that's a twenty-five?
Yes, it's all twenty-five through town.
Alright.
I also attended their city council meeting two weeks ago or so, and they would like to put in a stop sign. Um, I think those would be their main street, Morton and Howland. Um, I've advised against it. We're gonna try. Their concern is traffic coming in from the east, coming into town quick, um, and not slowing down and, um, abiding by the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Not the highway there.
Mm-hmm, we did, um.
But that's a farm market road, Cory.
It is.
So a farmer comes in with large equipment.
Um, we currently have it signed, twenty-five miles per hour, uh, once it's upstate. Uh, the twenty-five mile per hour sign is in a county right of way or outside of the city. So we are putting some red flags to try to make it more visible. Um, the sign was also kind of pushed down at an angle, so we've replaced the post. Um, it's a lot more visible. Like I said, we got the red flags on there, um, hopefully catching people's attention. We're gonna start with that. Um, if, if things don't get better, I've also already talked to them about uh, an approach, an intersection approach warning sign, which, oh, W four, I think. Um, talk about putting just a intersection warning sign, um, at the block to the east of their main intersection. So here's their main intersection. If we put that, that intersection approach warning sign here, that would give people another uh, warning sign of, of their main intersection on the main street. And then also, we talked about putting on a flashing beacon on top of that or on the, um, speed limit sign, so we're looking at some of the other options before, um, putting in the stop sign.
Yeah. That sounds, that sounds better.
But going back to the resolution, um, it, it is just to, as Richard said, make it legal, since the jurisdiction is with the board supervisors and not the city.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen for the stop signs through Emerson. They're already there.
They're already there.
Don't move.
I seconded.
By Crouch, second by Vinton. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Mayberry?
Yes.
Crouch?
Yep.
Vinton? Yes. I'm back doing my job.
She's on it, ladies and gentlemen.
Two copies, sign both, please.
Email both of those resolutions to me.
For the documents. Okay.
Do you, you want us to sign underneath, Cory?
Uh, was there not a, yes, please? I didn't know why Richard went with the, why we, we didn't have them both the same template.
Make it.
We must, we must have different ones for speed limit and stop sign.
General discussion. Does, uh, Mikey, have you making a sign or fixing our sign out here in our drive?
I saw it down, ten mile an hour. He hasn't talked to me yet, but.
Put it on your list.
Can we figure nobody's traveling down?
The hole's still there, so.
Ten mile per hour, right?
Uh, it's, the, the, the sign's good, it just needs a post. The sign's laying over in the flowerbed.
We had to pick it up the other day because the wind played almost across the sign.
Oh, really?
What made it fall over? Somebody run into it or?
Whole age.
No problem, yeah. We can, we can get a new post and get that placed. Thank you. Uh, for general discussion, I've had a couple conversations with, uh, prospective landowner buyers, um, discussing purchasing property on Level B Road. um, discussing purchasing property on level B roads, what it takes to, um, upgrade or rock the road on a level B road. I just thought I'd get the chance to tell you guys what our policy is and, and kind of why. Our policy is if someone wants to up, or just, what happens is they come in and say, hey, here's a cheap piece of land on a level B road. Surely I can just pay for some rock, four hundred, five hundred to a thousand feet and, and, uh, make a deal on, on the land and, and I still got a rock road, um.
That's not the case.
But that's, um, that doesn't fit our policy, um, and I'll also kind of go over why, but our policy is if someone wants to rock a level B road, they actually have to upgrade the road to a level A. So it's not just rocking, it's, uh, creating positive drainage. It's including new crossroad pipes if it's needed or structures.
Plenty of right of way, most of.
Right of way acquisition. Exactly, uh, we need, usually for, um, positive drainage, ditch four slope, uh, ditch bottom, ditch back slope, we need more than the forty-five foot right of way that's currently on level B roads. Um, and they have to upgrade the road not only to their driveway, but to the next intersection, uh, with a level A road.
You can't just do a hundred feet or three hundred feet.
Because we're really defeating the purpose end of, of, of this policy because uh, our graders already have large enough territories and trying to turn around, uh, and, uh, one of our blades on a level B road on a two-hundred-foot stub. And people usually don't like it when we turn around in their driveways and we try, we avoid that as much as possible. Um, we always tell the guys, turn around in intersections, um, just, just because of people don't like it turning around in the driveway. So you're really taking out a lot of time, um, of the maintainers' time trying to grade a two-hundred-foot section of the roadway. That aside, we're also talking about, uh, well, what if you just rock the road for two-hundred feet? If, if the county were to do that, that seems, seems, well, can't you just make an exemption? Well, now you're spending county money, taxpayers' money, that's only gonna benefit one person or maybe, maybe two people.
Every time it rains, mud's gonna come down on your new rock.
And, and so I don't think it's a good use of taxpayer money to take, uh, and benefit just one person, so, so that's why we, we make it go to the next intersection, because then the county may see some more benefit. Um, having, having a thorough street, so. Um, in case you guys get calls saying your county engineer won't let us buy a piece of land because it's level B, this is some of the reasons why.
They can still buy it, they just, if they wanna upgrade it, they just need to bring it up to our standards.
That's correct. But yeah, there's, there's been a, a couple.
Isn't it amazing how every year people that live on level B roads are always thinking, could we have a little bit more rock or have a little bit of attention even though the property was cheaper and, and now they understand of what it takes, taking it up.
And.
Amazing, every year.
And, and there's a lot of places where we already have these two-hundred-foot stubs and two, or a thousand-foot gravel sections on the level B roads, and, and so we're trying to avoid doing that anymore. And those that happened, those went in fifteen years ago because I, I haven't talked to the previous engineer lately about it. Trying, um, just getting his opinion about it, and, and it was, the policy was in, well, before he came in even, um, but there were just more of exemptions, and in oh-eight, uh, there was a resolution where it kind of, um, tied up some loose ends in that policy. So it's been in for at least twelve years, um, right now, so.
Well, where it really came to a head, down where Steve Boomer lives, we put in a new bridge years ago, back when I first got on the board. Henry Clark owned the property just north of the bridge and to the west. And he had Ebmer convinced all he had to do was put a tube in in a driveway, and he didn't need to improve anything because he was only going a hundred feet. That's when it really got.
Ugly.
Now you guys maintain it and fight it every time they?
Every year. So, explain, how does it take or what does it take to finally get the, the level B to the A? I mean, if there's a housing development? Or it, once it's marked as a B road, it always will stay as a B road?
No, you just said that it's, 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 it's policy, it's, they have to.
So no matter what, it will always stay as a B?
No, no, the, the road, the road, the people were asked.
If they, if they upgrade it and, and give the right of way and build it to our specs, then it, we can change it from a B to an A.
There's a set of, uh, Iowa code and, um, uh, gosh, it's not SUDAS, it's a, uh, DOT standards and specifications where it goes over what, what requirements are for, uh, on the level A road, and it's positive drainages, it's.
I wanna make sure I'm correct, level B roads have been verified by the landowners. I mean, they said it could go to a level B.
Back when they were, uh.
Yeah, uh, when they were.
Classified?
Classified, yeah.
Yeah.
These are like back in the olden days?
Yeah, back in the olden days.
Back in my day.
Yeah. But they were at, the landowners were asked.
Got it.
It wasn't that the county said, oh, this is level B, this is.
We're not gonna take care of this, we're not gonna take care of that, got it?
We do take care of them, we blade them in the spring, we blade them in fall.
It's irregular maintenance, but they do receive some maintenance, um, it's just not, not the maintenance that you see on normal gravel roads.
I don't know who the cable company is, well, it's the one that goes from school to school. It goes straight south of my place down a, a level B road, and the red ribbons were showing. And the county was kind enough to come in and it, it helped out the road a lot. They took the bank down on one side and just put it in the road. I mean, it didn't take even more than four or five hours to pull the bank in and. It was a bitch to get through for a while, but, uh, it's now covered back up.
That's, that's the minimum maintenance part coming out.
Richard, between that and the trash on your field, you have a really exciting day.
Eldon Smith picked up five, five-gallon buckets of plastic from his place to the first drive. He hadn't, he had never mowed yet this year. I mean.
Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Engineer. Anything else?
Other things, um, uh, we, we are advertising for our open engineering technician position, um, looking at the, uh, personal policy and, and knowing, um, that first year someone's hired, they they have zero days of vacation, but they do have opportunities for personal days, and also if they complete the wellness policy, uh, there's a, a potential to gain an extra day of vacation. I, I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, if, if, uh, if we could get a candidate hired by April thirtieth, um, they receive four days of, uh, personal days. If it's after April thirtieth, it goes to two days, um, up until if they were hired before, I think, July or, or so. But if they're hired after July, then it's zero days of personal days for, for the year, and that, and that restarts calendar year. Um, knowing the difficulty we've had hiring, um, for this position in the past, I was just wanting to kind of plant the idea in your head, if, if, uh, we had a eligible candidate that we hire in the first week of May, would you guys be open to the idea of maybe giving them an extra day of, uh, of personal days instead of, and I, I'm not saying all four, as if they were hired before April thirtieth, or maybe three, um, since, since he only missed the deadline by a week, but. When that, when that comes forward, um, I'll, I'll bring it more as an action item, but I just kind of wanted to talk to you guys about it now.
I saw your, um, ad on the page, but, and you're on till May first, is that, that you're taking apps through May first?
Up until May first, yup. If we get an eligible candidate, that's qualified and, uh, I think would be a good fit. I, uh, I might offer him the position earlier, um, if I needed to contact Mike Galloway or, or talk to our HR about it beforehand.
I think you have to wait the two weeks for sure.
But so. Uh, just kind of poor timing for, for my office, but also then for an eligible candidate.
Couple days.
Good. But we'll visit that when it gets closer to it.
Well, and that kind of position, it, doesn't come up very often. I mean, there isn't a lot of technicians around.
No, and, and we've really struggled getting good applicants, so.
Like, if you change the policy for one person, then you've got all the others that could have, you know, started in different departments that have the same sort of issues. So, I mean, it's kind of the unlucky, unluck of the draw, I guess, depending on when you start. So I caution you to be careful.
Um, last thing I had for general discussion, uh, is, is, is just kind of giving you guys an update on what I've been hearing from, uh, the Iowa County Engineers Association for Expected Revenue Loss from, uh, the, um, Road Use Tax Fund and, and also lost money.
Right.
I've, I've sent some emails, uh, as recommended by ISAC and ICA to, uh, both senators' offices and, and to our US Congress office. Um, they're, they're telling us that we could be expecting up to a twenty-five percent reduction and, and the road use tax fund, and, and that is a big, big part of my revenue source for the engineering department for the secondary roads. Um, the emails I sent were for, um, uh, for the three, the supplemental three point five. I think, I don't know if you guys saw the, the Excel spreadsheet that they sent out showing expected amounts if this passes as it's been written currently. Um, I think it was somewhere around like one point six million would go to Mills County out of the two-hundred-and-thirty million going to Iowa counties, so. Just wanted to let you guys know about our expected revenue loss and, and if that does, that bill does pass with the money stated as is, hopefully that, a lot of that would go to back, backfill the RUTF.
So Cory, um, I, you were out of here when we were talking about this earlier, but, um, the cities, the little cities, do you get their money and then you pay them so much? Is that where that money comes, how they get their funding?
For, uh, um, time twenty-one and FM money, yes.
Okay, okay, but they have their own part like that?
Yeah, we don't distribute art.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
If they, if they get some road use tax fund money.
Okay, 'cause I got a call from one of the city clerks, and she was, well, civic junction, and they were really concerned because of the census, et cetera, they were concerned that it goes according to population. But I don't think that has anything to do with it, does it? Or does it? Do you know?
It looked like, it looked like the counties, uh, as far as this, uh, this supplemental was based on population, from what I could do.
That, that one part, okay, but I mean, actually, when they figure your funding, it's not.
No, not.
That's what I.
Not the actual RUTF calculation.
Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand nine people they're claiming in Mills County, and we're rated to be withdraw one point, you know, one point three or one point six million dollars if they bring it down to us. I'm quite certain.
Everything's up here. I get it, Richard.
Yeah, let's see if I find that email real quick.
Just amazing, why the big dog think he has to have all the bone?
Well, kind of the same way that it, the, uh, small business loan thing went.
Exactly.
Which was not good.
Yeah, it was.
That was pretty ugly. Oh.
Okay, anything else, Cory?
That's all the general discussion I had.
Alrighty, um, for those of you listening, we will take a small break here. Uh, our next agenda item is at nine thirty for the public hearing for the final plaintiff journeys and subdivision. We will see you then.
Has he left? Okay, alright. Okay.
We're live. Alright ladies and gentlemen, it's nine thirty, time for our next agenda item. It is the public hearing for the final plat of journey and subdivision. We're waiting on the county engineer, he's gonna swing back in here.
Caught ya.
How many copies?
All of them. You get the approval, but all of them that are sitting in front of you, both big and large. Is there anybody out there listening?
Henry's there. Henry, you on here buddy?
Uh, you bet.
Thank you sir. Okay, let's open the public hearing, do we have a motion to open the public hearing at nine thirty?
I make a motion to open the public hearing at nine thirty.
Second.
There are motion in a second to open the public hearing for the final plat of journeys and subdivision. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. We'll have to close that before we act on it too. Okay, any public comments that we've received? You received any public comments? Anybody have any discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I think.
At nine thirty-two.
I second it.
I first it.
We got a motion by Crouch, second by Vinton. To close the public hearing at nine thirty-two, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. So, we're ready. Excuse me, sorry, nothing, I don't have anything, I just checked.
Get her shield.
Get a mask. Yeah, resolution twenty nineteen is next up. Basically it just follows all the criteria. As far as passing the subdivision or, and all the things, I will get in touch with you this afternoon, Mr. Clark, to let you know what all items you need to have to, uh, to file with the recorder. Basically it just says on the twenty-first of April, the board met in sec- session with, and in accordance with Mills County Iowa subdivision ordinance, effective February one regarding a final plat of journeys and subdivisions submitted by Henry Clark and Sandra Geiger in Glenwood and Center Townships, which consists of the plating of land in the part of the southwest, southeast, part of the northwest, southeast, part of the northeast, southeast of section eighteen, and also in part of southwest, northwest, part of northwest, southwest, and part of the northeast, southwest of section seventeen, all in township seventy-two north, range forty-two west of the fifth prin- principal meridian. This is the date, the, the final plat of journeys and subdivision was presented and considered for the county taxpayers, and we're proposing that the subdivision be presented for acceptance and approval by the Mills County. And the developer has submitted documents that fulfill the requirements of the Mills County Iowa subdivision ordinance, and now therefore we are resolved that the Mills County Board of Supervisor hereby accept and approve the final plat of journeys and subdivision as an official subdivision of Mills County Iowa. Developers Henry Clark and Sandra Gar- Geiger are directed to record the final plat and supporting documents with the Mills County Recorder and may commence the sale of lots to the general public thereafter.
Okay.
Any questions, Henry?
Uh, does, does that now get voted on at nine forty-five, or?
I would say we can probably move it ahead because.
We're gonna vote on it here shortly, Henry.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just hang on then, no, it sounds great.
Are we ready for a motion?
Motion to approve resolution or disapprove resolution, we got a motion to approve by Crouch.
Second it.
Second by Vinton to approve resolution twenty nineteen, journeys ed- sub- ed- journeys and subdivision final plat. Is there any discussion? No public comment has come through, okay, uh, hearing done, let's do a roll call vote.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Crouch.
Yes.
Vinton.
Yes.
Motion carried three to nothing.
Okay, so we need to, um, sign all the paperwork, um, I need, um, the chairman to sign this page right here. This is the chairperson and then you can write your name afterwards or whatever.
I'd like to thank all y'all for your time and attention to this item, so thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you Henry, have a good day.
Thanks Henry.
Alright, bye-bye. Thank you.
This supposed to be a check or what?
Yeah, just check it.
Oh, too late now.
Uh, it's whatever, write your name, I don't care what you did.
Just put an X on it.
No, he's not gonna tell me.
Oops.
Henry, is he still on?
He's gone, he's gone. I guess I forgot, I'll ask him in a new mail, he's planning on getting covered.
We picked out the brick on the building, Corey. Fake or whatever you call it.
We didn't, but they're still, they still have to stain the, the, the non-lay brick.
I mean, the brick that they're putting on, that, that kinda outstanding, I mean, it, it looks nice.
HGM I guess picked it out and we, I, we, we had a long sit down about the colors, no.
Yeah, it's real brick.
Yep. We had a sit down about the colors and a lot of it went, yeah, that looks good.
This will go to the city also.
Did you want something special? Uh, yeah, we're going to table, I just got an email from, um, Grant from, uh, Napa. We're gonna table the authorize the chair to sign the National Disaster Recovery Project intent.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for our ten o'clock. We have Jill Ford here representing Bob Bloom for a county health tax sale, two thousand ten zero one zero one zero. Fill us in a little bit, Jill?
Yes, I was contacted by Robert Bloom from Hastings and he's interested in this parcel of land over in Hastings. It is actually four oh seven State Street. He has agreed to pay the six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the tax sale and the ten dollars for the assignment fee and then also the delinquent taxes of twelve hundred and five dollars.
Twelve hundred and five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so then what he is going to do is, uh, since he wasn't able to come in today, he asked that I speak on his behalf. I do have an email that has said that he does agree to all of this and then he will come in and pay me and also sign the agreement. So, uh, then he'll start the, uh, process of, uh, the tax sale where he will notify anybody who is involved with that tax sale. And then he'll, uh, send, I believe he has to put it in the paper and I also suggested that he does obtain, uh, legal counsel, so everything is done legally.
Sure.
Lot seven thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Huh. Is there housing on these lots?
No.
No, these are all.
Yeah, I looked it up on Beacon and it is an empty, empty lot.
Soon as the computer wakes up, we'll.
I asked them. Identify the parcel number. Yeah, I I asked them if we had to do a resolution and they said no, that this this agreement for assignment of tax, of the tax sale was enough.
Get it back on the tax rolls. Good.
Absolutely.
Well, I figure if I just put the lots down there for the parcel number, that would be good.
And actually, in the legal description, the four oh seven State Street was not listed on the actual legal out of the recorder's office. But I did put it on there in parentheses just as a.
Sure.
So, and then I will need you to sign that and Carol to sign that and then I am to meet with him either one day this week and he will bring in the checks and he will sign and then he will sign it at that time since I just have a verbal for, or a the email that says yes, he agreed to all these terms.
Checking. Good.
Okay?
Yay.
I'll make a motion to re-approve, uh, county tax sales to Mr. Bloom.
And I second it. Fantastic.
We'll go to motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's a good deal.
Motion carries.
Like Lonny says, get it back on the tax.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you very much, Jill. Wonderful job.
I will have.
Great job.
Okay.
There's your lots over there on the east side of town.
Probably gonna build something on any.
Good. Three lots. That's not bad.
So, thank you, Jill.
Pretty cheap price, really.
Three lots for two grand? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, did you say we were not doing the ten fifteen now, Carol?
Uh.
No, just the one part of it.
Just, just the.
Yes, we're not doing. Oh. The, okay, discuss the authorize chair to sign the National Disaster Recovery Project intent to obligate constructions. That one is not ready yet. We're just gonna act upon the first part.
Okay.
All right.
Easy enough, easy enough. All right, do we have a motion to approve the C, the CCDBG GEX for the mission to the Bautner River? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
38,551 to JEO, 12,797 at the University of Iowa.
I'll make the motion.
I second it.
We've got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Let's hope they get this stuff done pretty soon, if it gets.
Yeah, I think some of these projects are starting to come together, I did some easement work.
They got everything lined up, it's just I wish they could get started on.
Yeah.
You know, seeing something is better than talking about it.
Hasn't this been going on for three years?
Yeah, we got two years to spend a minute.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Do you have the forms for that or can I... This is what you give me here, yep, yep, sorry.
Hand me that other one back too. And then I'll hang on to it for the next time, that one don't sign it. Yeah, there you go.
There you go, Richard. Okay, we have a conference call with Kelly Campbell at 10:30, so for those of you listening, we'll take a break and we'll be back in about 20 minutes.
That's it, I just unmuted it.
I know.
Okay, it's ten thirty. Time for our next agenda item, this is Kelly Campbell on the conference call with the 2020 Census Bureau. Morning Kelly, how are you?
Uh, good morning, absolutely wonderful, a nice bright sunny day does wonderful for one's state of mind, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
You're right, what can we do for you?
It sure does.
What can we do for you Kelly?
I wanted to take a little bit of your all's time, uh, talk about the 2020 census. We are in the self-response stage right now of people responding to the questionnaire. Uh, huge pat on the back, uh, goes to Mills County. You guys are sitting at fifty-four point two percent, so, uh, over half of the residents of the county have already responded, so, uh...
That's wonderful.
Congratulations, hip, hip, parade, pat on the backs, uh, that is actually fantastic numbers. Before getting any further, I want to thank, uh, Jackie for helping set up, uh, the phone and emailing. This is really, uh, a pleasure to be able to talk to you guys, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
The 2020 census, uh, the numbers that we're getting in, uh, brings to light many different support systems that the count helps support, uh, in the six hundred seventy-five billion dollars that come back to states, counties, and cities every year, uh, of tax dollars. And during this pandemic, the light has shined pretty brightly on the healthcare and emergency response services that the state and federal government use the census data to help determine the disaster recovery and dispatch, uh, you know, how much financial support will be dispersed. The state of Iowa and the state library and data center has come up with a figure, it's not a census figure, but this is one that the state thinks is very accurate, that if we miss somebody, that's about seventeen hundred dollars that normally would come back to the state and then dispersed from there. Uh, but this number that we come up with in 2020 will be the same number that everyone has through 2030. So, ten years of seventeen hundred dollars, seventeen thousand dollars. So, the Census Bureau's mission of counting everybody once, but only once, but in the right place is very important. A residence can still go to mymy2020census.gov and online and input their census. Now, if they still have the twelve-digit alpha and numeric code that is on that postcard that was first sent out, they just go ahead and type that in because the census is tagged to your physical address. But some people have misplaced those, so, they could still go online, still at the my2020census.gov site, and input their information. It takes a few more questions to be answered because they have to find the right address, uh, putting that in, uh, to be able to verify that we're still needing the information from there. But they can't do it that way, or, people can do it by telephone at eight four four three three zero twenty twenty. When that first started with the phone, uh, back in the middle of March, we were doing very good business, as it were. People calling in, it didn't take too long. But now, during this time of social distancing, our numbers for people answering the phone are down quite a bit. So, it takes a little bit longer to do it on phone. It's still possible, but we can't, uh, do it that way. And then also through the end of the month, if people haven't responded, they'll start receiving a paper questionnaire. Uh, some people throughout the nation receive one. The first mailing, because maybe they determined that area was a low connectivity to the internet or something like that, so, a few people are filling them out by questionnaire, but people will be receiving those. And then sometime after, uh, the first of June, more likely into July, will be our non-response follow-up where we send neighbors out to count neighbors and knock on doors. So, that's, uh, important. We have had to move things back, uh, two months to three months roughly because of this. Normally, we would be giving, uh, the president the total number of residents in the United States by December thirty-first of 2020, but now we're moving that back, I believe, uh, to April of 2021. Uh, just because we're, we're gonna need a little bit of extra time to make sure that we fulfill our mission of counting everybody, but only once and in the right place. In, uh, Mills County, there's a, a couple of the cities that should be recognized. Uh, Glenwood, uh, over fifty-six percent, which is outstanding. Silver City, fifty-one percent. But we do need a little help in some of the smaller communities, uh, like Hastings at thirty-five percent, Henderson at thirty-nine percent. Those are a couple of the communities, although, very small, a hundred and eighty-two and about four hundred and fifty people are in each one of those cities respectively. If you know people in that area or, uh, have the opportunity to talk to residents, we just need to encourage them to fill out the census. And the benefit of filling it out early is we're gonna be able to take those same resources that we would normally be going out and looking for, oh, almost one in four Iowans because the self-response rate in 2010 for Iowa was almost seventy-nine percent or a little over. This way, if we could get it up to, boy, it would be great if nine out of ten people self-responded this time. We're gonna take those same resources to go out and find, uh, a smaller fraction of our residents to make sure that we count everybody because of the importance of not missing a particular person or persons in any county, so we can get back, uh, a stronger amount of tax dollars here to the state. But also, as important, is the census count does, uh, look at the representation in the House of Representatives. Now, we had five in 2010, uh, we've lost one, we're down to four. And as an Iowan, I really want to make sure we keep at least four, uh, voices for our concerns here throughout the state in our governing body in Washington DC. So, uh, again, if you, uh, know a people, uh, or if you're just out casual conversation, I did send to Jackie a, uh, editable, uh, census 2020 count that you could put in. Uh, information on Mills County, uh, you know, stuff you'd like to put in there that would be pertinent to the county, but also have a great message, or, uh, whoever does stuff on the website or Facebook could go to the 2020census.gov website in the upper left-hand corner. You can click on partners, and on the next page that jumps up, on the left side of the page, there's something called outreach materials, and there is a whole slew of public service announcements, flyers, things that can be downloaded, put on the website, and you can, you know, claim them as yours, yours. There's stuff about rural America, farming, uh, cities, counties, uh, different demographics that you could put on there to reach out to, uh, all of the residents in the county. So, that's one way that, uh, you can do it fairly easy. Uh, and I, uh, want to thank, again, Jackie to be able to do this. Uh, I hope that you guys can get out and help us with this very important mission. If you have questions and concerns, I'd be more than happy to take stab at answering those right now.
Kelly, what are you hearing from the city of Pacific Junction, how is that one going?
Well, I'm not hearing a lot, uh, they're at eleven point four percent. Now, there's, I will send Jackie, uh, a paperwork that I have here that is called the... Let me just bring it up on my screen. Residents' criteria and resident situations for the 2020 census, uh, of the United States. And it says something about some of the rules, uh, on that. Uh, ultimately, I'm not sure, I can, uh, talk with some people, but if the county participated in BUCO, which is the local updating the census addresses, that gives the county and the city an opportunity to, uh, go back and, and look at the count later on. I know that Tara Painter, uh, library director in Glenwood, Iowa, was, uh, at the end of February gonna be setting up a time of, uh, opportunity for people from Pacific Junction to come in and fill out their, uh, census, or she was gonna have at least a informational, uh, evening for people. And I'm not sure if that was able to get off the ground because of all this, it, it might have. But we're at a time where we can look at some of those things, but also during the NARFU, which they call the non-response follow-up, uh, we'll be getting out and actually knocking on doors and trying to find, uh, people so we can count everybody. So, that's what I know, uh, but if you have, uh, names and numbers, emails, phone numbers, and people that would be part of Pacific Junction, uh, I would be more than happy to call and, uh, talk to them.
Perfect. Well, if there's anything else we can do for you, let us know, we'll get, we'll get our IT guy on it and try to see what we can get him to do.
Kelly, there was a, a librarian called Tara Painter, and she was...
She's just, she just talked about that when you were texting.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, she reached out to me and I've done a little email with her. Is she a good resource?
Yes.
Yeah, she really is. She's a, she's a great organized librarian.
Well, I, I have her email and I have the library's phone number. I can send an email and just say how things are going. I'm not sure if she would get it at home if the library's closed, but, uh, I'd be more than happy to reach out to her if possible, or if anyone there knows, uh, she can, uh, give me a holler, or you have my, Jackie has my email and, and work phone. Uh, I'd be more than happy to, um, talk about it if she's able to get out something, or if she has something in the future. Here's one of the things that, once we get, uh, once we unlock the door on America here soon, we're gonna have something called the mobile questionnaire assistance, where we can sponsor a day at the library or in Pacific Junction, if that's an opportunity and people can come and fill out their census. We just need internet access and, but we can publicize that, have a census employee there to help with it and, uh, put up some signage and things and, and to make sure that we can, uh, count, uh, the over four hundred and... I think about four hundred and seventy right now, the people that were last, uh, the numbers the census has for Pacific Junction.
Okay.
But I will forward this, uh, uh, residents' criteria to, uh, Jackie. And there's some, uh, it's, it's eighteen or nineteen different situations for counting people. Uh, and it, it's loose, there's, there's things in there about, uh, uh, people on the census day if they're in emergency shelters or, or people away from their normal residency. But with Pacific Junction, I don't think any of these perfectly outline that situation, so we're gonna have to keep on top of it, but I know, uh, thank you for, uh, Tara, because she is, uh... She's a real good advocate and we're lucky to have her there, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you Kelly, if there's anything else we can do for you, just let us know, buddy.
I will, and thank you all, and enjoy the rest of the day, stay safe.
Thank you, take care.
Thanks Kelly.
All right, take care, bye-bye.
Okay, the next agenda item is the Appeal Board Appointments for the 2019 flood buyouts. As discussed earlier, um, I would be all for Evan, Robin, Swinger, Phillips, if she'd be willing to jump on that. Anybody else have any?
I was gonna give Carol, uh, Leo Smith's cell phone number. Is that all right, or?
Yeah.
Well, uh, I, I don't know...
Is he willing to search, sure?
You just have to ask him, I mean, uh, but where, you, you'd sound like you're gonna send everything to them and then they...
I'm sure with the way things are right now, that's probably how we're gonna have to do it. And then I'm sure that maybe I need to get some updates from the state, but I think then they will communicate amongst themselves and then come back as a whole to us.
It's not like there's a lot of them, I mean, if you're right now, there's...
We have one right now and we know another potential, but until the people get their actual letters to determine the buyouts, which are coming down later, not exactly here, they determine how many more. So, we do know that it's a board that does not get paid, so it's a volunteer only. Um, and we, you know, need to find people that have background in areas where they would have expertise in, you know, determining what property values are or worth, so...
So, I think a couple of girls, like Janelle...
So I think a couple of girls like Janelle McIntyre or Julie O'Hara would be also some good candidates.
Have you discussed this with them?
No.
Good.
We haven't discussed with the other two, have we? With Robin Phillips and Leo Smith?
I asked Robin if she, I can put her name and ask her if she would be willing to serve.
Notified either.
No, no. If she were appointed, if she would even be willing, and she said she would. So that would be, that's the only reason. I just checked ahead to see if she might be.
I just thought maybe a female on board might be a, a good deal.
Robin Swinger is also...
Also, um, what is, um...
Who did you say? Janelle McIntyre and who was the other one?
Janelle McIntyre and Julie O'Hara.
I was gonna say, possibly what I would suggest maybe is to contact them to see if they would be willing if the situation arose and we can kind of give them the guidelines and then possibly next week, we could come back with an appointment of, you know, whomever.
Sounds good. It'd be nice to keep the wheels turning on it. Good. Well, we better. Anybody else's names you'd like to throw in there? You don't want to use anybody local?
You know, I don't, I don't think it's an issue using anyone local. I think, you know, we probably need to have someone local as well. So, you know, coming up with a name that would be not probably have any, you know...
How about Jake Rice? He's an auctioneer with...
He's from like Central Nebraska, isn't he?
No, they just live over on the other side of Red Oak, but he owns Ellen.
They nearly helped Alan. I just thought he's from Nebraska.
He's married.
And I think, you know, obviously, anybody in the, uh, you know, we probably need to, well, we're not gonna be doing the city of Pacific Junction, so it'd be our rural area is the only...
Anybody have any lo...
You know...
Anybody look, any local names you'd like to throw out? Should have one local on it, I would think.
Well, yeah. I, I agree.
At least.
Yeah.
Do we need an attorney? Do they all need to be into real estate? I mean, I was thinking what Terry was telling us. Could be...
Frazel's Real Estate People is what he was focusing on.
Banker.
Banker.
Financial. Yeah, but, you know, maybe even a property manager or something. I mean, Chad Mc, I don't know, Chad McCallister might be a name to throw out.
Chad'd be good.
Chad'd be good.
Somebody wanna reach out to them?
I can, I can ask Chad if he'd be interested.
That's six people.
If we get three to four of them, six, I think we'd be doing real good.
It doesn't have to be limited to three, so...
Yeah.
I think, I, I think you can get too many for what we're doing, but three to five, six isn't gonna hurt. Okay. No formal action on that. We'll just kind of get a hold of everybody. We'll put it on us, discuss formal action next week and maybe we can...
That'd be good.
Get it done. Our next agenda item is Resolution 2020, the Reappointment of Joanne Cohn to the CIRHA Board.
Yeah, we kind of dropped the ball and supposed to have done that earlier in April. I missed the email somehow. So it's supposed to be effective of, as of, I think, the ninth of April, so, um, retro, back because she has agreed and I contacted the CIRHA Board to let them know that we are actually doing that today, so...
She's done a good job.
I would make a motion to reappoint Joanne Cohn to the CIRHA Board.
Can I second that?
We've got a motion by Crouch and a second by Vind to approve Resolution 2020, the Reappointment of Joanne Cohn to the CIRHA Board. Is there any discussion?
Very lucky that we have her to do that for us.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Me, Barry.
Yes.
Crouch.
Yes.
Vind?
Yes.
And I think I...
Lucy Carries, three to nothing. Yes, you give me the resolution here.
There's a couple of them I want you to sign because they kind of have their own format and I have mine, so...
Why don't you noon lunch and go and vomit?
My noodle, yes, those are... They're by myself at the office.
I'm getting to where I can eat pretty good off my steering wheel.
No, I told him it was just a one-page.
Thick paper, I wanted to make sure there wasn't a... Okay. Anybody have any general discussion? If not, thank you all the listeners that tuned in. We'll see you next week.